I'd like to call to order the regular formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council on September 19, 2017. Roll call?
Botschway.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Dickens.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here. Welcome to your City Hall on what's been a beautiful, foggy, sunny, late summer day. I don't know about you all, but I love the fog, because I don't drive too much, but I love walking in the fog. Before we get deeply into tonight's meeting, I want to take a minute to honor the life of a notable Iowa Cityan, former Mayor Bill Ambrisco. Mayor Ambrisco passed away on Friday, September 8th, at the age of 87. He was an alumnus of the University of Iowa's College of Business and was a prominent leader in Iowa City's business community. He exemplified what it means to be an active community servant. In addition to serving on the City Council for 10 years and serving as mayor for, I think, just two years, if I remember rightly, yeah. He also served on the City's Planning and Zoning Commission, the Senior Center Commission, and the Johnson County Council of Governments. Additionally, he served in leadership capacities with both the Chamber of Commerce and the Iowa City Area Development Group. What's going on?
Amber Alert.
Sorry, it's an Amber Alert. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Bill served as a mentor to many in the community and inspired countless numbers of people to step into public service roles in the Iowa City area. His presence will be missed, but his impact in our community will be felt for a long time. On a personal note, I had really good exchanges with Bill over the last several years of his life, and I can recall that when I was elected to the City Council in the mid-'90s, I actually replaced him on the City Council in a special election. In any event, our thoughts are with his wife Carly and their three sons, David, Michael, and Daniel. So, we'll move to item two, which is proclamations. And we have one proclamation to read tonight, and I think someone's here to accept this proclamation, Nikki, right? Okay, so I'm gonna read it, and then you can come up and accept it, Nikki, and say whatever you want to say. Whereas Table-to-Table began in April 1996 and since then has distributed 17 million pounds of food, 14 million meals in Johnson County, and whereas Table-to-Table collects from over 33 donation sites and delivers to 26 agency sites in Iowa City at no fee for the services, and whereas in Iowa City alone, Table-to-Table rescues a total of 1.3 million pounds of food, which provides 1,083, no, 1,083,000 meals from those pounds in a year, helping to divert 650 tons from the landfill. And whereas Table-to-Table makes a monetary impact to recipient agencies of $4.23 million and a total monetary impact to the community agencies and those they serve of $8.46 million. And whereas, there are only four paid staff members and over 240 dedicated volunteers that deliver to 40 food routes every week to continue the work of Table-to-Table. Now, therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the last week of September to be Food Rescue Week with Table-to-Table, and urge all community members to join us in supporting this worthwhile and productive endeavor. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Did we get it?
Nope.
Try again.
There we go. Okay, one more? There you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I do just want to thank the Iowa City community so much. There is no other organization like this in Iowa, and the Iowa City community is the reason that we exist, because you believe in what we do. We rescue all that food. It would go to waste without you. So, thank you so much, and thank you so much for supporting Food Rescue.
Thank you, Nikki. Okay, item three, consider adoption of the consent count or as presented or amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Botschway, second by Dickens. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Botschway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes, motion carries seven to zero. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence for item 3D9?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Botschway, second by Dickens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, these, this is community comment for items not on the formal meeting agenda. If anyone would like to address, discuss any particular topic that's not on the formal meeting agenda, please feel welcome to come up to the podium. Please state your name and take not more than five minutes, please, to express your ideas.
Good evening. My name is Diane Breck, and I'm representing Chatham Oaks this evening, and I just want to comment to the potential changes in your residential code status on your rental units. I'm a little bit nervous, so forgive me. I just want to talk a little bit about what we do. We, our organization, provides services for people with mental illness, and what we do is we help individuals who want to integrate back into the community when they're coming out of an acute care setting, maybe from a large residential care facility, and what we do is we provide services to those individuals in the community. And we, we look for safe, affordable housing for these individuals, and as you all know, in Iowa City, that's a challenge, especially for the individuals that we serve, because they live on a limited income. We try and find housing that allows them to have less than 30% of their income towards rent and utilities, and that's a challenge. We just aren't able to do that. So, what we have done is tried to be creative, and we provide that housing for them, and we've partnered with landlords here in the community that will allow us to rent properties and place at least five individuals in those locations. And by having up to five individuals in those locations, we're able to decrease the amount of money that they have to put towards rent and utilities. And we also look for safe housing. We don't want our, our individuals that we serve living in an area where we wouldn't want to live or our staff wouldn't feel safe going into. We, we have staff on site up to 24 hours. They might be there for, they might require 24-hour staffing or maybe less than 24 hours, maybe they don't need overnight staffing. The majority of our individuals do not own vehicles, and so, when you look at the parking issue related to that, we have maybe two vehicles, possibly three at certain times of the day, at those locations. And we have never had an issue with a service call from law enforcement. We provide the necessary supports and services that these individuals need. And so, I would really encourage you to think about that, having an exemption for social service agencies who provide this kind of service. Without what we do, there are a fair number of individuals, most of the people that we serve, who would not have an opportunity to reintegrate back into the community. And this is the community that they're choosing, their families are here, their support systems are here, and they want to live just like you or I do, and giving the opportunities that we have by being able to have up to the five individuals living in one location really makes it much more affordable for them. I did provide a letter to the city clerk, and it has my contact information on there if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, is this the one piece of correspondence that we have?
There's two.
There're two, okay. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Carol Logston, and tonight I'm coming to you with my private citizen hat on. I'm part of a partnership called Logston Properties, and for five years, we have been renting our houses to group homes. We have six homes that we rent to Chatham Oaks. Three are on the east side, three are on the west side, and we very strongly believe in the mission of Chatham Oaks to help residents live in our community. They're a delightful organization to work with. The residents are wonderful. We've gotten to know many of the residents as we go into the homes and make repairs, and we understand what the city staff is trying to do, and we share the same concerns that you have with maintaining safe, welcoming, and stable neighborhoods. But we also want to encourage you to think about the residents of Chatham Oaks or some of the other group homes and understand what their unique needs are. And we, we want to continue to be able to rent to Chatham Oaks if they are looking for their houses. We would like to be able to find additional houses to rent to them, because we think that it's the right thing to do, to give people a home in our community, and we just thank you for thinking about that.
Thank you. Was that the second?
That's the first one.
Yeah, so I can have a, ask for a motion, could I have a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Botschway, second by Dickens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anyone else? Good evening, Brandon.
Hello. Just piggybacking on the back of that, affordable housing in Iowa City, I just, I just want to call attention to the stuy that's across the street, which is the Chauncey Swan Building Site, which, which was decided upon by a previous council. But we lost Chauncey Swan Park with all the trees, with all the grass, with the place for the elders and the kids and everything like that. It, it's a great place for kids. A lot of people come through there. I can't even count how many people are disgusted by this. There's nothing you can do, as they say, it is what it is right now. But in order to have something that only benefits a few people, to destroy a public park, I think is a bad idea, and it's a good time to call attention to it. They're motoring out there right now. The cranes are moving. Responsible men are working their jobs, but it was done completely in a wrong way. I feel that a lot of citizens have complained about this, or at least a lot of people that I know have, and that it's a precedent, not to forget, that when you make a decision to put a building up, that you have to protect what you have. If you don't do that, you end up with nothing. The people who use the park are basically everyday people, working-class people, people perhaps who are even working on the site now, would come there. You and I and everybody would share in the music in the place. So, I think it's a, we lose it for this season, we've lost it for this season, we lose it for next season, it looks like, unless, unless things change according to schedule. The actual building itself, you know, it's 50, 55 units, from what I understand. There was no planned affordable housing in there, and workforce housing, from what I understand, five, five units. And Jim, I see you want to probably comment, and I would like you to after I finish, but I think we have to do better. You know, we're, a group of us is doing a survey of people and how much they pay percentage-wise of what they make in their jobs. And there's a large group of people who are paying 50, 60, 70, even 80%, working full-time jobs, to landlords. And when you multiply that, thinking about how much landlords are getting percentage-wise of people's work, when you work 40 hours a week, and you work 160 hours, say, just roughly in a month, and you take 80% of that and you give it to a guy sitting there on a telephone, there's a problem here. So, I think that Iowa City's affordability is in question, and that we need stronger laws, we need affordable housing there, we also need rent control, and we need other, other types of things to do so that people can actually afford to live in the city, which has slowly become kind of the classic neoliberal city, which is good for the rich, but if you don't have it, you can't come around. There are a lot of great things, like festivals and things that do take care of people, there's a lot of free things, which is great, and the council does a great job. But unless there is affordable housing, unless people can live here, you're going to have a stale city. And I think, I'm speaking for a lot of people, and I'm speaking for people who are paying $1,000 for their family to live in a small apartment, you know, six people in an apartment and things like that, and this is one of the expensive cities to live of its kind, and I just encourage you, just use this minute to just think about that, and hopefully, in the course of this next year, we'll, we'll really put forth your best efforts in order to consider the working people of this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brian. Brandon, I was just shaking.
Brian.
Brandon, I was just shaking my head, only, only because we purchased, the city purchased five units for the Iowa City Housing Authority, so, that's different. Yeah. Thank you for speaking. Anyone else? Okay, I don't see anyone. We'll move to item five, planning and zoning matters. Item 5A, this is an ordinance conditionally rezoning 2.4 acres of property from medium-density single-family RS8 zone to planned development overlay, medium-density, single-family residential OPD8 zone located on Dodge Street Court. Does anybody need to make any ex parte disclosures? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Hold on, I gotta find my mallet. Open the public hearing. Good evening, John.
Good evening. John Yap, Development Services. This proposal is on the east end of Dodge Street Court, which is a fairly short street off of Conklin Lane, north, or excuse me, south of Dodge Street. The property is currently zoned RS8, which is a medium-density, single-family zone. The applicant has proposed a planned development RS8 in order to cluster density into townhouse units on the south side of the property, preserving more than 50% of the northern half of the property as open space. The townhouses would face Dodge Street Court. They would have access through an existing townhouse and multifamily property directly to Dodge Street. In other words, it would, there would be no direct access to Dodge Street Court. To the west of this property are existing townhouses that, that also face Dodge Street Dodge Street Court is a fairly narrow street, just under 20 feet wide, does not have curb and gutter at this time. That is why the access is planned to go directly to Dodge Street via a rear lane that would serve the townhouses on the property. Staff recommends approval, subject to the owner dedicating right-of-way, so Dodge Street Court is to a 50-foot right-of-way, which is our minimum standard at this time, and subject to the development draining stormwater away from Dodge Street Court to the extent possible, and we would confirm this with the final engineered plans, and the building designs be reviewed and approved by the Design Review Committee to ensure compliance. Staff recommends approval, and Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. Be glad to take any questions.
Any questions for John?
So, John, the vehicular access goes through another property to Dodge? Is that how?
That's correct. If I can bring up the aerial, it's a little bit hard to see, but this, the property to the west has been developed with townhouse units and a multifamily building, and access to this property would go through that property directly to Dodge Street. And they do have a access easement to accommodate that.
So, there's only one egress onto Dodge Street for both of those?
That's correct.
For both those developments?
That's correct.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you, John. Would anybody else like to address this topic? All right, seeing no one, are you folks inclined to vote in accordance with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation?
Yes.
All right. I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Move to consideration.
Second.
Is that you?
Yeah, second.
Sorry. Moved by Dickens, second by Botschway. Discussion?
I thought this was a really well-crafted application of the planned development overlay process with the preservation of the natural area. The townhouses, I think, are certainly suitable, given the context of the housing that surrounds this general proposal. Density's well under the RS8 allowed density, so I think it's a good, good outcome on this one.
Agree.
Any others? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botschway.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Item 5B, alley north of City Hall. This is a resolution vacating the alley right-of-way in Block 44, original town plat. I'll open the public hearing. John?
Good evening, John. This is a right-of-way vacation for the alley right-of-way north of City Hall. This is connected to the Aspen Ventures Development Project, proposed for the north City Hall parking lot. Excuse me. We do have some criteria when considering alley vacations regarding access to private property, general traffic circulation, utilities, et cetera. This right-of-way does not provide general traffic circulation. It is used solely for access to the parking lot. It does not provide a general traffic circulation function, it does not provide access to private property. With the proposed redevelopment of the north parking lot, the city would have parking within a proposed parking structure with access to Gilbert Street and to Van Buren Street, and the staff analysis is therefore the alley right-of-way is no longer necessary. Be glad to take any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, John. Anybody else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Mims, second by Botschway. Discussion? It's a necessary step to move ahead with this particular project, which we agreed to some time ago. Hearing no more. Roll call, please.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botschway.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 5C, right-of-way adjacent to 2222 Old Highway 218 South. This is a resolution vacating the right-of-way adjacent to 2222 Old Highway 218 South. I'll open the public hearing.
2222 Old Highway 218 South is the property that, that my mouse is on currently, to the north of the subject right-of-way. The subject right-of-way only provides access to that property, which is owned by the State of Iowa. This is a photograph of the right-of-way as it exists today, so it is an unimproved right-of-way, formerly occupied by South Riverside Drive. South Riverside Drive has been repaved to connect directly to Macalester Boulevard, and therefore, this right-of-way is no longer necessary as right-of-way. The city owns the property to the, to the south and, and does not use this right-of-way for access to this property. Similar to the previous item, this right-of-way is not used for general traffic circulation, and vacation of the right-of-way would not have an impact on vehicular or pedestrian circulation. Be glad to take any questions.
Can you remind us of why we're vacating the right-of-way?
It's a request from the State of Iowa, from the property owner, to the north, to be able to add that to their property.
Okay.
So, the, on your, on your next agenda would be a conveyance of the property.
Okay.
And in the bigger picture, we're going to be exchanging this with the State of Iowa for the right-of-way that you just vacated, so that we can then convey that right-of-way to the, to the developer.
Okay. Thank you, John. Any questions for John? Guess not. Would anybody else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Mims, second by Botschway. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botschway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 5E, rezoning Country Club Estates Railroad west of Lake Shore Drive. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 21.77 acres of property located north of Railroad and west of Lake Shore Drive, from rural residential RR1, 4.16 acres, and interim development, single-family residential IDRS, 17.61 acres, to low-density, single-family residential RS5 zone. This is pass and adopt.
Move to adoption.
Anybody need to disclose any ex parte disclosures? Okay.
Move to adoption.
Second.
Moved by Dickens, second by Botschway. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botschway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 5E, rezoning Country Club Estates Railroad west of Lake Shore Drive. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 21.77 acres of property located north of Railroad and west of Lake Shore Drive, from rural residential RR1, 4.16 acres, and interim development, single-family residential IDRS, 17.61 acres, to low-density, single-family residential RS5 zone. This is pass and adopt, but again, any ex parte disclosures need to be made? No.
Move adoption.
Second.
That was another topic, right? Okay. Yeah, so there's a move, moved by you, moved by Mims, second by Botschway. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botschway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 5F, Country Club Estates Seventh and Eighth Editions. This is a resolution approving the preliminary plat of Country Club Estates Seventh and Eighth Edition, Iowa City, Iowa. Could I have a motion? No. Well, yeah, I guess. A motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Botschway, second by Dickens. John?
This is a preliminary plat for the property that was just rezoned on the north side of Railroad, west of the Country Club Estates neighborhood, and I'll bring up an image of the preliminary plat. It consists of 81 single-family lots, the majority of which would be accessed off of internal streets. There are some smaller single-family lots that would front on Railroad and would be served by a rear alley, as shown on the, on the plat. You've had some correspondence from the existing residents of Country Club Estates, and staff met with some representatives of Country Club Estates last week, and they had some concerns regarding this proposal, the majority of which have to do with private covenants between the existing homeowners' association and what the new homeowners' association will be. The city is not a party to private covenants. They had one other concern regarding the name of the subdivision, and requested that the, the name be changed from Country Club Estates to a different name, to not be associated with the existing Country Club Estates subdivision and the homeowners' association papers. The developer has agreed to change the name, and we would do that with the final plat for the property. Developer has agreed to pay, as part of a conditional zoning agreement, to pay 50% of the cost of upgrading Railroad, which would be done at, at a future date yet to be determined. Be glad to take any questions.
Any questions for John?
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, we got a motion. Discussion. So, I want to state something before the rest of you have a chance to speak, and that is, Susan and I met with about 10 residents of Country Club Estates during a recent listening post at Uptown Bills. We quickly discovered that their concerns didn't focus on rezoning, so there was no need really for me to bring that up, but it, their concerns did focus on the subdivision
You may have representatives of the homeowners' association here tonight. I don't know if they want to speak or not, but.
Good evening. It's nice to see you again. Yeah. Okay, you don't want to speak though, right?
I've set my.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, sorry, I just want to, we have a question. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Anybody else want to address the topic? No, go ahead.
So, John, I just wanted to get back to an email that I had. Sorry, it took me a while because I had it on airplane mode. What, can you go back over the concerns again, just to make sure that they've been addressed?
The homeowners' association?
Yes.
Concerns? There were three main concerns. One was the name of the subdivision.
Right.
Number two was, and I might have this out of order, but the, there's a stormwater management and wetlands area to the north of the subdivision, and there was a concern regarding maintenance of that and what percent the new subdivision would pay toward maintenance of that area. And number three was regarding property ownership. And there's a few pieces of this proposed subdivision that are currently owned by the existing homeowners' association. That would have to be rectified by the time we get a final plat for the property. But that's a private issue.
Private issue. So in particular, there was concern about use of certain amenities. How did that get worked out?
The developer agreed that the new, this new subdivision would not have use of the existing pool facility and other recreational facilities.
Okay. You probably just said that and I missed it because I was trying to work on that, so.
I don't think I said it, but no, that's.
All right. That's my question. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thanks, John. Any other discussion?
First, I was concerned about the size of it, eighty-one lots. But being the single-family and being that's my district in the west side, I'm, I'm really pleased to see the west side growing and, and including some single-family homes. I think it's a much-needed aspect for the west side.
And to that, well, and to the point with the question I was trying to ask, and I'm trying to pull my email because I knew I had my notes on that. It was just a couple of concerns that had gotten, or gotten raised by members of the community around kind of the amenities that they have within that, the homeowners' association and wanting to continue with that kind of culture or things that were provided from that standpoint. So I think it's been addressed and so, from the private developer, and so I feel comfortable moving forward.
I would just quickly comment. Normally, I like to see more mixes of housing types. But for a single-family division, I really like the fact that there are so many of them, so we are going to add a lot of units. So I, I like the density of this. Normally, that's a concern if there's too many single-family. It seems like to me you don't get quite the density that you want. But, and I like the, I just like the design of it, so I think it's good work.
Anybody else? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Batshway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Batshway, seconded by Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Item six, sale of lot in the industrial park. This is a resolution authorizing conveyance of Lot Two in the industrial park to Alexander Lumber Incorporated. I'll open the public hearing. Good evening, Wendy.
Good evening. Let me just pull up a slide here. Hi, I'm Wendy Ford, Economic Development Coordinator. And tonight, I point out to you the four hundred and twentieth Street Industrial Park, for which we recently received a purchase offer. We've had this property listed since before two thousand and fourteen. But since then, Jeff Edberg in our audience has been our real estate agent of record. And he has presented an offer to us through Alexander Lumber for five hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars, four hundred and nine, five hundred, sorry, five hundred eighty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars for Lot Two, which is right up here in the corner of, on the corner of Compass Drive and four hundred and twentieth Street. This is a little wacky of a view since north is to the right. That's unusual. Usually, north is up, but it's to the right here. You can see the Iowa Interstate Railroad tracks here, and then this is Highway Six just below. So this is our new industrial park. We have our very first offer ever. Alexander Lumber, it has been operating in the city now for at least a few years. They serve the construction and contractor industry as, basically as wholesalers. They do have a showroom for their cabinetry, cabinetry products and another area south, further south on South Gilbert Street. But the purchase of this lot out in the industrial area would allow for them to be able to better serve their contractor industry and perhaps have to, and perhaps be able to grow into using the rail access, which is just to the, just to the east of the property. And you can see the spur here, a brand-new spur, never used yet, that will be easily accessed from Lot Two. Those are my comments. Any questions?
Questions for Wendy? Thank you, Wendy. Anybody want to speak to this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move for resolution.
Second.
Moved by Batshway, seconded by Dickens. Discussion?
I'm just glad to see this happen. I did talk to some of the management team from Alexander when they had their grand opening, and it was, it was brought to my attention they really wanted to be in Iowa City. And I'm glad that we were able to accomplish that because that was one of their main goals, was to stay in Iowa City because they, they felt that they were buying a long-time Iowa City business when they bought Nagel, and they're just happy to be here.
It's nice, after all these years, to finally have at least one of our parcels out there sold, and I hope it's the first of many to come quickly. Right.
I, I would echo their comments, but I don't need to restate them.
And, yeah, I just love this project. Lumber Yard, Railroad, you know, good stuff.
That at all.
It's exciting.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Batshway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Item seven, belt filter press replacement. Resolution approving plans, specifications, form of agreement, and estimate of cost for the construction of the City of Iowa City Belt Filter Press Replacement Project, establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notices to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'll open the public hearing. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move for resolution.
Second.
Moved by Batshway, seconded by Dickens. Discussion? Well, the only intelligent thing I can say about this is I did a tour of the sewage treatment plant and the facilities down there, and I'm betting this is an important part of it.
Yeah, I think you want these belt filters to work. They've been in service since nineteen eighty-nine. It's time to replace them, but it is not an inexpensive endeavor. You can see the cost, the price tag is about one point eight million for this.
That'll come from the water funds, then?
The wastewater fund, yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Batshway.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item eight, mixed-use development. This is a resolution approving an agreement for private redevelopment by and between the City of Iowa City, Iowa, and Huronamai Partnership LLP, Huronamis Square Developers LLC, Iowa City ES Hotel LLC, and HS three fourteen LLC.
For resolution.
Resolution.
Yeah.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Batshway. Just, we'll turn to Wendy first.
Hi, I'm Wendy Ford, again, Economic Development Coordinator. Tonight, you are going to be considering a development agreement for a project that has been a long time in the making, a critical link between downtown and riverfront crossings. It has been one of the busiest corners in town for decades, but it is also perhaps one of the most underutilized, having been completely vacant for more than the last ten years. Along State Highway Route One, this lot has been one of many street corners featuring automobile-oriented services. There was a gas station on this corner and one across the street, an auto dealer where the Dubuque Street parking ramp is. There is still a tire store two blocks east, and more service stations at the Gilbert, Lynn, and Madison Street intersections. Jump-starting development in, on the block in two thousand and five, the city took a lead by building the Court Street Transportation Center. A year later, a tornado tore through downtown, and Huronamai Partners began working on partnerships with the city and the University of Iowa, and even got an approval from council for a fifty-million-dollar, fifteen-story project with a sixteen-million-dollar TIF to include commercial office, offices for the University of Iowa, residential units, hotel, restaurant, and retail uses. But soon after that, the recession hit, and a year after that, Iowa River Flooding diverted everybody's attention. Plans were shelved until a few years after the flood, when an idea to partner with the university again on a new, post-flood location for the art museum was explored. Then those plans were shelved when the university opted to put the museum on land it already owned near the main library instead. Today, things have changed. Most recently, the university completed its one hundred and fifty-six-million-dollar School of Music across the street to the west, and the forty-million-dollar Hilton Garden Inn is nearing completion immediately to the south. In the distance, in this slide, you can see the cranes working on the twelve-story rise under construction just behind. Their new neighbor, Huronamis Square, will include commercial and residential components in two buildings. The buildings will lie on an east-west axis, parallel to each other. The one on the north lies along Burlington and is primarily residential with retail and commercial on the first and second floors. And the one on the south is an extended-stay hotel. Each building will be seven stories tall and will be connected by a vestibule facing Clinton Street, the main entry to both buildings, except for the retail entries facing Burlington Street. For this forty-million-dollar project, the developers are seeking eight million dollars in tax increment financing rebates. To be eligible to receive those rebates, they have agreed to a certain set of minimum improvements, which are written into the development agreement. And those include, for the Element Hotel, having ninety-one extended-stay hotel rooms, which each have a full, compact kitchen in every room, building a patio, pool, and fitness room on the second floor, getting access to the Court Street Transportation Center for hotel, hotel guest parking, and achieving the gold green seal certification. And that was fairly, a fairly new term to all of us, is a certification that can be granted by a third-party, nonprofit, environmental certification organization for businesses, and they have a hotel category as well. And then, minimum improvements for the mixed-use building include building the first floor of retail, the second floor for commercial office space, Class A commercial office space, and then having the third through seventh floors have residential apartments in them. And on the third through seventh floors, there will be a total of forty-five units, which in our TIF policies will require that fifteen percent, or seven in this case, be provided as affordable housing. And in this case, there will be two required to be onsite with the additional five to be either located onsite as well or have a fee in lieu of eighty thousand, eight hundred dollars be paid to the city for not providing the additional five onsite. So minimum two onsite and five, potentially five more, totaling the seven onsite. And perhaps, as an option, having the developer pay the fee in lieu, which is established through our Inclusionary Housing Resolution a year or so ago, instead. So the next three slides show various elevations. This one looks southeast along Clinton Street with the residential building on the left, the entry vestibule with the hotel logo on it. You can see that E-looking thing for the Element, the name of the hotel. That's in the middle, the vestibule, and the hotel on the, with the lighter facade material on the right. This one shows it in context with the new Hilton Garden Inn, which is operated by the same owner that will operate the Element, Kinseth Hospitality. The hotel estimates that approximately thirty-four thousand room nights will be sold each year. That's thirty-four thousand people who don't live here, spending the night downtown in, in a hotel. And they'll generate upwards of two hundred thousand dollars a year in hotel motel taxes, which go directly to support the police, the parks, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau to continue marketing to get people to come. The hotel on the right in this view, looking directly across Clinton Street, is an extended-stay hotel, which is geared to guests who stay longer than a night or two and who would like some of the comforts of home, such as a living area or a kitchen so they can, so they could prepare some of their own meals while they were visiting. From this angle, you also get an idea of the setback that will be provided along Burlington Street, and that is in the far-left, lower-left corner here. So if this is Clinton Street going left to right, this is the corner of Burlington and Clinton. And you can see how the building overhangs a little bit. Well, that provides a setback, which effectively widens the sidewalk there, making it more comfortable for pedestrians to be on what is sometimes a fast and furious section of Burlington Street downtown. Let's see. You can easily see the retail on the first floor here, and then the second floor of office space above that with the five floors of apartments above. There will only be, I think we're at nine apartment units per floor typically. This, this is another view, looking south across Burlington Street, with the School of Music here on the far right. This view shows, this view gives you a good look into the retail space on the, on the first floor. And again, the straight-on view of the office space and residential above. I believe the apartment unit mix in those will be approximately twenty-five two-bedrooms and twenty-one-bedroom apartments. There'll be no three-bedrooms in here. For any TIF project, developers are required to provide an amount equal to fifteen percent of the housing in their projects as affordable, which is seven in this case, as I mentioned. I'm just going to reiterate this affordable housing piece. The developers will provide the two affordable units onsite, one one-bedroom, one two-bedroom, and they'll have the option of providing the remaining five onsite or by, by paying the eighty thousand dollars, eighty thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars per unit fee in lieu if they decide not to provide them onsite. Providing them offsite is not an option in this case. A quick overview of the plans. This is the basement level, which essentially shows the parking lot or the parking deck, which will be accessed, I've lost my cursor, there we go, which will be accessed through the Court Street Transportation Center. And I might add as well that that will require an additional agreement because that facility was funded in part by federal dollars. There'll be sixty spots here, and they will provide the parking required for the residential. And there'll be a couple of extra spots remaining after that, which will probably be used by the commercial office users above. The hotel parking will be arranged very similar to the way the Sheraton and the Hilton Garden Inn have already had agreements with us for use of our parking ramps. It'll be the same for the Element Hotel. This is showing the first floor, and you can see the drop-off area on the left. In this case, north is straight up, so Clinton Street runs top to bottom, and Burlington Street runs across the top. You can see here on the left, the, the drop-off area near the vestibule. This is the configuration now for the retail on the first floor, and you can see those are accessed by, by doors at Burlington Street. And those would be outfitted for tenants as agreed by, as agreed between the, between the developers and the tenants. Then, this is the main floor of the hotel area, so there will be the hotel lobby over here, the reception area, some of the back-of-house workings going on towards. here, the reception area, some of the back-of-house workings going on towards the back of the house, basically, on that first level. The vestibule, then, that we talked about, stretches across the length of the, of the building, and will provide steps, stairs, and elevator access up to the second floor here, where pedestrians can also gain access to the Court Street Transportation Center here, and can also enjoy the swimming pool, fitness center, and terrace amenities that will be on top, essentially on top of the, and outdoors, on top of the vestibule. This is a typical layout for the rest of the floors going up, with the residential configuration of apartments here on the top, and the hotel unit configured here. There are about 15 units per floor on the hotel, and like I said earlier, about nine units per floor for the residential. This is kind of interesting, it requires a little bit of study, but it's sometimes hard to imagine how you could get underground access from a built parking ramp into underground of a, of a new facility, and, and this, this hopefully shows how that works. On the, on the left side of the drawing, we have a view as if we're standing on Clinton Street, looking straight east, and so this is a cross-section north to south, and you can see the floor of the parking ramp rise up to meet this little squeeze point here, I'll call it a squeeze point, in the transition between the Court Street parking facility and the underground parking in this new project. This view here is a cross-section going the other way. This would be as if you're standing next to the back of the new Hilton Garden Inn and looking north, and how that, the two of those connect. Then above here are the stairs and the access to that parking ramp, and you can see the, the terrace, or you can tell where the terrace would be from, from this point forward. These are some images that are typical of Element Hotels, kind of a modern streamlined look. And now the numbers. Let me skip ahead a little bit. As you know, we partner with the nonprofit organization, the National Development Council, to assist in our financial analysis of projects that are requesting TIF. The analysis includes a full review of all project costs and financing proposed by the developer, or the sources and uses, as we call them, and this table shows sources and uses. And sources and uses must balance, and that's why I have this red box. I guess, pay attention to the far-right column. This, this uses here totals up the various aspects or costs of putting this project together, both the hotel and the mixed-use, interestingly, very similar in cost, for a total of $40.7 million. In order to finance that, then, as, as I said, you have to have your sources, the way you're going to fund this, match the uses, or else you have a gap. And our due diligence includes a review of all of the costs and sources of financing, and, for example, we compare land costs with other similar land sales, and we look at third-party appraisals of land. To determine whether a bank loan is sized appropriately, we work with the city assessor to estimate the finished value of a project and ensure that the project has indeed maxed out the, the loans that are possible to attract to that project, using the loan-to-value and debt-coverage ratios, which are the typical ways that our banking community does the same thing. So, in this case, you can see that the developer has a, there we are, sorry about that, a, a bank loan secured for $22,000, $22,451,000. And because the TIF policies require that a couple of things, one, the developer equity be at least equal to, if not greater, than the TIF request they're seeking, and that, that equity also is such that they will not be unduly rewarded by the gap financing that we would put into it. In this case, developer equity is $10,302,000, leaving a gap of $8 million. Okay, so, I want, I want you to look at that gap, let's see, oh, there should be a purple, there should be a purple box around the second to the bottom line there with the city's financial gap assistance. Not sure what happened to it?
Right there.
Oh, there it is, okay. So, that $8 million of gap financing is detailed here in this next slide. So, what we did is look at each part of the project independently, saw the two tables, one for each side of the project, and we found a total gap, an actual gap of $5.2 million, which is the cash required to get the project out of the ground. They couldn't begin if they didn't have that cash. So, it also requires that loan sources be maxed out, and I, I mentioned before that equity be equal to or greater than the return for, or sorry, equal to or greater than the, the TIF, and size to a return that is fair. So, for the promise of TIF rebates to cover the $5.2 million, the developer must take out a TIF loan that would be paid off or paid back by those future rebates. In this case, the TIF loan of $5.2 million carries with it a $2.1 million interest cost. That's a 4.5% loan over about 13 years. Then the remaining $600,000 of the gap would be, is proposed in this case to be covered by a TIF advance. So, that would be set up so that the developer would have to build the building, get it out of the ground, complete all of the minimum improvements that we listed before, and, and knowing that we're then guaranteed having that project completed, we would grant the developer the $600,000. And the reason for doing it this, this way is because it helps reduce the interest costs in the TIF loan by reducing the, the time needed to pay back the TIF loan, and it also helps with the early project cash flow, especially due to the lag time before those rebates hit and begin to help them, begin to help them pay down their loans. So, and as I said before, city risk is minimized because the project will be complete, which guarantees us the value out of the project before the advance is given. So here, the total between the 5.2 gap filling, the 2.1 interest, and the $600,000 comes out to $8 million. I'd like to finally talk about how this project aligns with the strategic priorities that you set up at the beginning of your terms. Those included, those include having a solid financial foundation for the community. In this case, the project brings $22 million in new value to our tax base. It also brings in an annual, up to a quarter million dollars, plus or minus, depending on occupancy, a year in hotel motel taxes. You also have a goal of having a strong and resilient economy. This adds office, retail, and residential downtown, and it connects downtown with a prime riverfront crossings lot. It fosters healthy neighborhoods by eliminating a blighted corner, an underutilized blighted corner, and both of those words are used in the state's description of blight. It encourages vibrant, a vibrant and walkable urban core by having the storefront windows and the setbacks along Burlington Street, enabling pedestrian traffic a little more comfortably, and it promotes environmental sustainability by a couple of ways. One, the roof-mounted solar panels that will be on top of the mixed-use building, and the green gold seal certification for the Element. No, the gold green seal, I think I got that backwards on there. Gold green seal certification for the hotel. This project was reviewed by the Economic Development Committee on July 21st, who voted three to nothing to forward it to the full council with their recommendation, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Wendy, and I apologize for not kind of telling you this before, and I saw you in the hall. What's, and I kind of quote it, put it on here as quotes, what's the true financing? When I say that, we went through, I think you did a wonderful job going through kind of that gap analysis, and I got the, I mean, I don't know if I got the same phone call, Jim, earlier today, but I got a phone call, and I can't remember the part of it, but they were just kind of upset. And so, I, I kind of want to talk about, what is, what is the city giving, in a sense? Like, are we handing money, are we handing $8 million over to the developer? Can you kind of walk through what this, I mean, basically, the rebates is what I'm talking about, what that actually means?
Right, so, so first of all, we're not handing money over the develop, over to the developer. In order to be able to rebate tax increment financing dollars, the project has to be built, it has to be assessed by the city assessor, the property tax bill has to be paid, and after it's paid, then a portion of it is rebated back as a tax rebate. In this case, that tax rebate will go directly to pay off a loan that was taken out based on the, based on the future promise of, of TIF rebates. Is that making sense?
Yeah, no, perfect.
Okay.
Other questions for Wendy?
In the EDC, you talked a lot about the protected debt levy being 25%. Could you explain what that is? Because I think that's an important part of the immediate benefit potentially that the community gets.
Sure. When, when people in Iowa City pay their property tax bills, they not only pay a portion to the city, but they're also paying at the same time a portion to the schools, a portion to the county, and there are a couple of other tax levies in the consolidated property tax bill that they get, and it, right now, adds up to about $38 for every $1,000 in valuation. So that's what gets paid in, whether you're, whether you own a residence, whether you own commercial property, sometimes a rollback applies, but the rate, that $38 per thousand in valuation, is essentially the same for everybody in Iowa City. Now, because the TIF rebates are subject to being able to, let me see if I can back up a little bit, TIF, TIF rebates are subject to the TIF levy, which is all of that $38 per thousand minus approximately 25%, or in this case, it's around $8 or so, which is called the protected debt levy. And that is a total of the, the debt on the budgets of each, the city, the county, and the school districts, that is not and cannot be subject to the TIF rebates, leaving about $30 per $1,000 in valuation to be rebated.
And where does that money in the protected debt levy go? I mean, I think that's-
Back to the taxing jurisdictions for their debt service.
Okay.
Would that cover, Wendy, for example, the recently passed school bond? Would that be-
Sure.
All under that category then?
Mm-hmm.
So, I'd like to ask the same question, but in a different way. So, how much is the property currently generating in property taxes, and how much will it be generating after the project is completed?
Well, the, the valuation on the property right now is a little over $1 million. So if you take that $1 million times approximately $38, you get about $38,000. That's what they're, this is a rough estimate, back of the envelope, that's what they're, that's what they're paying right now. Second part of your question was-
How much will it be generating after the project is completed?
Well, I'm really good at mental math, but I don't know if I can take a $22 million value, divide that by 1,000, and multiply it by $38, but that's the formula to figure it out. I've got it on spreadsheets on my desk, I don't have it in my head.
About $836,000 if I did it right.
Thank you, Susan.
Figured somebody had a calculator.
A phone, but that has a calculator too.
So, how much of that 800 and whatever thousand dollars per year will immediately be allocated to the taxing bodies? 25% of it, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so, 220,000 per year will immediately go to the city, county, and school district?
Correct.
Divided up, right?
Yeah.
Just as long as we understand these are really rough-
Yeah.
Rough numbers here, because there's, you know, there's commercial classification, there's residential classification, there's a lot of variables here, so just understand those are very general ballpark numbers.
That was kind of the how-to.
And Mayor, to your, your question as well, Wendy touched on this in her presentation, but this focuses just on the property taxes, and certainly hotel motel taxes are a, a big piece of the city budget, and an increasingly important piece of the city budget with all the, the squeeze on property tax that you all are well aware of.
Jeff, just to be clear, that is money that comes directly to us, or not to us, so to speak, I mean, it goes to-
Funnels through the state.
C V B and state, okay.
Yeah, funnels through the state to us. We remit 25% to the C V B and use the rest for parks and police.
So, I'd also like to ask the but-for question. So, I got a phone call, not from the same person, I think. I got a phone call from a friend today. He's not a really close person, I don't know, don't know him all that well, but he's a good guy, and he basically said, "Why should the city commit any money to this project? It's prime real estate, so why not leave it to the private market?"
Well, it might be best answered by the developers. However, I can take a shot at it and say that one thing that the city does is consider, if we weren't participating in this project, we do know that a smaller project would, would happen on that corner. Ours is to figure out how we might affect the highest and best use of that corner for 50, 100 years in the future. And I, and I think we know what the, the typical development on a prime, close-in corner is in Iowa City, and I think the motivation for assisting the developers and provide something that is not that is clear.
Yeah, I think to Wendy's point, I think you can look up and down Burlington at the, and, and probably Gilbert Street, it's two comparable streets, and, and look at what type of development we've attracted in just the, the private market over the last 10 or 15 years, and expect that you'd get something similar on this lot.
Right, so, I, I said something very similar in the phone conversation today, and indicated that there is a new building, less than two years old, located about a half a block or a block away on Burlington, that is what we would expect probably, if, if we let things to the market, and it has to do with the market conditions in Iowa City. So here's the second question. Again, that come, this comes from the same fellow. Does Iowa City really need another hotel?
The market studies show that an extended-stay hotel does not exist in this market, and that there is a market for one. The operators of the Element Hotel operate several hotels in the, in the area, and multiple hotels in the region, and would probably be the first to, the first to, to back out of a, of a hotel deal that wasn't, that wasn't going to be successful.
I guess one other question that I wanted to just have clarified, it's worth a million dollars as a vacant lot, and is currently generating $38,000 per year, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Approximately.
So, that will continue, the developer will continue to pay that $38,000, if that's not subject to the financing, or not?
Oh, that's a good point, Rockne, right.
Yeah, just to clarify that, yep.
Yeah.
The, the base assessment that we're going to use for this is actually going to be lower than that million, but because of the debt service levy requirements, the, the taxing entities are going to get more than they're getting right now on this property through the life of the TIF, and then once the TIF expires, they'll certainly realize the full benefits of this.
For me, so, I really liked this presentation. Can you do that, that graph next time? That shows, I mean, for the next, the gap, that shows kind of, kind of going back to Rockne's point, and kind of what I was trying to get at as far as kind of what's the, I get a lot of comments or even complaints about, you know, the city kind of giving money, so to speak, and the rebate piece of this is kind of the interesting part of it, and kind of what Jim was alluding to is one, I think a couple of people, I think is the tricky part, that, you know, having that graph, at least for me as a visual learner, really kind of explains that, no, this will stay the same, or even as Jeff kind of talked about, will be a little bit more, nothing will change, and ultimately, we're having this, you know, project put forth that will benefit, you know, many different things. So- So if we can do that graph next time, for me, maybe not for the other counselors, I think that could help me explain it more in general.
Sure.
And presumably you're gonna get questions after tonight. We'd be happy to put together a, a kind of a one-page sheet for you that, that gets you those specific details, so you can talk about that.
Great, that'd be great.
That'd be helpful. Any other questions for Wendy?
I do wanna make one more point. There are a number of really great benefits to this project and Wendy did a, a fine job walking you through. One that I don't wanna overlook is the architecture associated with the property. And, and Jim, this gets back to your question on what we could expect if the private market were to, to produce something. I don't think you'd get the level of architecture that you're seeing with this proposal. And what I think is really important about this particular site is the proximity to the School of Music. And knowing that the architect designed this specifically in the context of the School of Music, both from a scale, material and, and shape perspective, I think that's really important and will have a lasting impact for generations.
Actually, I had two more questions for Wendy, sorry, I forgot. I looked on one side of the page, I got really excited about that one part. Is the, going back to your, so can you, I, we talked about this briefly and then I, I think I mentioned to Kevin, then I ran back over to Jeff. Can you just re-explain the affordable housing, just for a public benefit? Cause I don't think I'm gonna do it well enough that you could do it. Kind of the affordable housing piece of the 10% and then the 5%.
Sure. This property is located in the Riverfront Crossings area, which has its own requirement for have, for provided, for the developers to provide 10% of the number of residential units they're building as affordable. In that, in that inclusionary housing, the developer can provide them onsite, off-site, or they can pay a fee in lieu of, that is about eighty thousand, eight hundred and some dollars per unit. There's also a TIF policy that requires that a developer who is receiving TIF has to provide 15% of the, their units on, as affordable. So what we did in this case, and, and what, what we did in this case was take that top 5%, the five that are required by, by receiving TIF and require that those be provided onsite for sure. 5% of forty-five in this case was two of those sites, one one-bedroom, one two-bedroom. With the remaining five units able to be, and those are the ones that would be-
The 10%.
Tied to, right, tied to the Riverfront Crossings Inclusionary Housing Code and be 10% in five units in this case. Those could be either provided onsite or, or paid for by fee in lieu of.
And just to be clear, if they decide to take advantage of the fee in lieu of provision, that money comes to the city and is earmarked for affordable housing projects in the Riverfront Crossings District. So it's not like we can take that money and spend it on anything else. It will hopefully leverage, if they decide to do it, hopefully allow us to leverage even more investment in that district and create more affordable units.
Perfect, that's what I was looking for.
We don't know for sure what, which direction it will go then? Fee in lieu of or?
Not yet.
Onset, offsite?
Yeah.
Perfect, and the other question I had is going back to that picture of the overhang and the, the sidewalk. Can you, maybe I just missed it or kind of got it mixed up. It looked like there was a cutout for where people were coming in for the hotel.
Kind of a drive?
Yeah.
Kind of a drive?
Yeah, kind of a drive-in, drop people off? And I get that, but how, how does that mess up or limit kind of the amount of space on that sidewalk?
Hmm, I don't, let's see here, let me find the plan view. There it is.
Right there.
Well, it looks like that, that little cutout would be equal to about the size of a parallel parking spot. So not compromise the, the walking area on the sidewalk.
Does that over, so if you look at that bottom there, is that overhang? Well, is that the overhang, the actual building? Is it's like overhanging of the sidewalk that's gonna be underneath? There's gonna be a walking path or is that just the walking path that's there?
You know, I'm not sure I have, I know enough to be able to say for sure.
Okay, well, if you can come back with it, that's fine.
What I can tell you is, I think you're aware that the Clinton-Burlington intersection project was pushed to next year because we weren't able to attract bidders this year. And I know Ron Kneckie, our Public Works Director, has already been in touch with the developers. They certainly have a keen interest in how we redevelop that, not only for this project, but for the Hilton Garden Inn project that'll, that'll open next month. So we all have the same goal. We wanna, we wanna accommodate the, the necessary drop-off for both hotels. But clearly, we're trying to maintain room for pedestrians. So we don't have the exact dimensions, but it will feel comfortable for pedestrians.
Okay.
I'd like to ask a question, which maybe you're not the best person to respond to, Wendy. Maybe Ben or Kevin is. It has to do with the, the gold level certification under the Green for Hotels standard. And it's my understanding that you, you've agreed to pursue this gold level certification. And that's a stretch for you, that there are very few such hotels in the country that have done this. And I wanna express my admiration for, for that. But also kinda get some detail from you about, you know, how many other hotels have-
Sure.
Gold level, et cetera.
There's actually, we, it's a Marriott endorsed program, Green Seal. It's been around since nineteen eighty-nine. There are no hotels in Iowa doing the Green Seal certification. So we would be the only one, and we would be the only one doing it at the highest level. There's actually only about forty-five hotels nationally that are Green Seal certified. And there's only five of those that are at the gold level. So it'd be a rigorous certification level for us and really addressing all points of sustainability for the hotel, so.
Yeah, thanks, I wanted to get that on the record. I think it's something you should be very proud of. It's a, a good asset for your, for your hotel.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just wanna make a comment that the, the people that are building this are all been around Iowa City for years. Heronimus has really helped build the downtown when they built the old Capital Center. Hodge and, and all the other partners that are with you, Kinses, have been Iowa City-based for, for many years. I, I think it's very important that we remember they're from Iowa City. And that's, I think that's very important, that they, they have a stake in this city and they're willing to put their money there.
Before we dive any further into us discussing it, is there anybody else who wants to address the topic? All right, no, nobody else, so.
I have one more question around, and maybe I missed this in the prior document, but conference room space? Is there conference room space in the hotel? And how, how much conference room space? And I'll explain kinda later on why that's important, but I just wanted to.
I, I wouldn't call it conference space. It's a small meeting room, it's typical of extended stay hotels, about six hundred square feet.
Well, I would just say I'm supportive of this. Having had the opportunity to sit through all the EDC meetings and presentations and discussions, this has been certainly a long time coming, as Wendy said, way back from before the two thousand eight flood and before the, you know, the recession that started. With at that time, a much taller project, which I think would have been perfect on that particular corner where you've got high volume of vehicles, et cetera. But I think the design here, I think fits in really well. I think it fits in well with the School of Music. One of the overhang pieces that Wendy was talking about is actually on the Burlington Street side, just like the School of Music has kinda that overhang. Because the buildings are built so close to Burlington Street, but trying to give more space for the pedestrians, there's that overhang which gives it a little bit different feel as you would go into those retail spaces off from Burlington Street. I think the idea of an extended stay hotel downtown as well as the other, you know, amenities and residential units, et cetera, that are here just fit in really well. I think, you know, restaurant owners and other people downtown have just gotta be thrilled to have more amenities that bring people downtown and spend their money. So very much supportive of this.
Anyone else?
I certainly, starting this project, my, my, my first point would be, the, which I think Jeff referenced was, this is, this is really an opportunity site. I mean, this is a significant location in terms of the entryway into Riverfront Crossings with the School of Music directly across the street. So this is, this is a site that I would certainly hope, as a city, we could accomplish more than the sort of standard development that, you know, we can expect in Iowa City. And so the, the notion of this being a, what I, I think could be called a high-quality, high amenity project is critical. One thing, you know, on council, you know, so, so we see the project, all of us have seen it preliminarily and expressed, I think, our, our support for it without really knowing what the TIF would be. So this is, this is a little bit of a challenge, I think, for us, especially vis-à-vis the public. You know, that we, like anyone on the street, you know, we, you look at a project, you say, yeah, I think that's a great project. And then we come, but we don't know at that point, when we're giving our support, what the level of city support will be required to, to finance it. And, and I was interested personally in seeing how with this project, which is a smaller building than the High Rises, how, how it would compare in terms of TIF support? Because it's a smaller building, the structural systems and so forth would require less cost in order to implement. And in fact, in, in talking with Jeff about the project, the, the development costs per square foot are significantly lower than with our High Rises. So I think that's another point I would make, is that while the, the occupancy is gonna be market-driven, the development costs are less. So I think we can expect that the price points may offer a different opportunity than, you know, we, we've seen with the High Rises. So I think, you know, I'm pleased with the project. I think it's a, a great infill project with taking advantage of the opportunities that the context has provided. The last point I would make is, you know, that cantilever on, on the Burlington Street side, I think does have some impact on the pedestrian experience because it, in a sense, occupies some of the air right above the sidewalk and thus limits the opportunities for planting trees along Burlington to help buffer that experience. I believe we, and I know I've mentioned this before, I'll just mention it again quickly. There are ways to redesign Burlington to reclaim what we've lost with that cantilever. And I hope at some point in the future, we can widen the sidewalk to, to reallocate airspace, so we can in fact create a better streetscape.
Maybe I'll go ahead and speak. I'm very supportive of this project. It's beautiful architecture. And I wanna address one issue directly related to the market question. You know, I've asked myself that same question. Why, why should we have the city participate in tax increment financing? Well, I think with the music building that's adjacent to us, I think that provides really a good metaphor. Really what we're trying to do is have a downtown that's like a symphony with all different types of instruments blended in harmony, working together to creep, to create something beautiful. And you don't want a symphony only full of violins or cellos or violas or trumpets. You want them all working together. And to the more utilitarian projects that have been generated by the market, those are important. So we're not saying for those developers that have done those more utilitarian, those have filled a need and those have served us really well. I think our only point is, is we don't want a downtown where that's the only housing model. And that's really what we're trying to accomplish. And as to this particular project, the rate of return here is going to be very reasonable. And without it, essentially, the project wouldn't happen, at least in terms of the National Development Council. So this is a very pragmatic approach development. We have a really dynamic developer here, it's a good design. And I'm really excited for this project to actually happen.
I would just say I'm pretty upset, actually, because I was gonna say something about the music and how that, how that, you know, helps with that. So I should've just, just gone and just cut in. I'll be supportive of this project as well. I wanna go back to what John said about kinda this opportunity and this is a, a location that I think needs that city's support. You know, without it, I know, I don't want you to get up, Wendy, it's a vacant lot. And I think I've talked somewhat anecdotally on council about vacant lots and vacant aisles and what we can do to kind of spruce up some of those things. And so for me, that's a win. And we're talking about eight million dollars, it's a significant amount of money. And there's that balance test that I frequently brought up on council as far as how I think about some of the things that we do and we're alluding to what we should move forward on. And I just feel like the amenities that this project provides and the things this project provides outweigh that level of support. I mean, and I'll just go through them really quickly and I'll be done. Again, it's a vacant lot currently, and so that's still a very significant piece for me. The affordable housing component that we were able to put in with the Riverfront Crossings District is important. The hotel amenities, I appreciate the local development because there's a lot of, there's some businesses that could come in and buy the property and kinda do whatever they want. But we have some people that wanna put a stake in a property that's very important to Iowa City. One of the things that I didn't ask a question about, but I really was excited about, was the garage underneath. I remember our conversation with the parking director of university talking about if you ever did an aerial view of Iowa City and looked at how much parking we have over our spaces. It, it's kind of disheartening. And so knowing that that parking is underneath, I think is gonna be great and allows for more space and more use. Nobody's talked about the solar panels, like, I think that's awesome. So I'll be checking those out on a regular basis. So I'm just really-
Yeah, right.
Check them out, I think it's cool. So I think it's just really-
Let me know when you're going up, I wanna keep count.
Well, I mean, I'm not gonna go up, I'm just gonna check them out. So I'm really excited that this building kinda has some of those features. And we talked about it, kind of when we were talking about signature projects in general, where we can say that in regards to solar panels or in regards to, we even talked about like wind, whatever you, Iowans call that.
Turbines.
Turbine, whatever. Windmills, whatever. I am Iowan, but I just still, that's a weird thing for me when I still drive through Iowa. But I'm excited that we're able to do somewhat of a signature project in that particular way. So all those points for me really, you know, have me supporting this project. And you're coming with me, Susan, to see those solar panels.
You caught me. Keep count. Yeah, Kingsley stole some of my points, but it was somewhat difficult for me to make a decision on this item, because to be honest, I wasn't thrilled at the request for eight million dollars in, in TIF and being told that it was the only chance or the project wouldn't be done. Also hearing the property called blighted, I, I didn't like that term because blight is, I, I think if something is dilapidated or uninhabitable and, and this property is valued at a million dollars, I don't think that is, is exactly blight in my terms. So I had to start thinking about the positive attributes of it and what we as a city are getting in return for it. And I, I, I do, I like the height of it, I, I love it. I think it's just, just perfect for that corner and for both those buildings to be the, the seven stories max is, is good. It's a project that has potential to be a very positive addition to the downtown. And I think, as John mentioned, a nice transition, and maybe Wendy also, to the Rearfront Crossings area. I think that'll blend in really nicely and developing that corner lot that's been empty space for, for so, so long. And it, it deserves to have a, a good project there. And I think this, all in all, is a good project. The affordable housing units will be, will be great. We've been talking about that all year long, about the need for that. Although we're uncertain how many it's going to be. I, I would hope for the seven units, that would be good. One thing that hadn't been mentioned is the patrons of the extended stay hotel. You'd said maybe two to five days, but I'm thinking even maybe longer visiting professors as such are there for even longer. They're going to be patronizing our, our downtown, our stores, our restaurants. They have the kitchenettes in their rooms, so they're gonna wanna cook some food. They'll, they'll shop the stores. And so that's going to be a very positive for our economy also. The gold green seal certification is, is wonderful, as well as the solar panels and the garage space below, I think it will be good too. So all in all, the, the positive things kind of outweighed the negative thoughts of, of the eight, nine-dollar TIF. So in the interest of having the development in that, that space, I, I would be in favor of it.
Okay, my turn. I also will be supporting the, the proposal. It gives us much greater control over the development of this crucial site, a site that has stood empty for as long as I can remember. I can remember parking there while going into the mill. I did that for years and years and years and years, but now it's gonna change. And it sits directly across Clinton Street for the new Voxman Music Building. This means, because of the quality of the architecture- This means, because of the quality of the architecture, it will enhance the overall quality of urban design at this really important intersection. We had a meeting maybe five years ago in this council, and I said to Tom Marcus and others, "This is the most important site in Iowa City right now, and we need to make sure we get a really good development on it." And I think we've done that, and thanks to the cooperation of the developer and the architect and so on. It will also greatly improve the walkability of this part of the urban core, which is a crucial thing, and somebody mentioned the gateway to down to the rest of Riverfront Crossings. I think that's crucial as well. And it's going to contribute to our sustainability goals, and that's why I asked the question about the gold seal. I think this is a real attribute, and I urge you to promote it as something really special that will attract more people to it. So bravo to you. It's a signature project for this council, and I am very, very pleased that we will be supporting it unanimously. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I want to make two quick comments, kind of piggybacking off something John said and something that Kingsley said. John made the comment earlier about, you know, lots of times, projects come before council at the very beginning stage, kind of the conceptual stage, and we indicate, you know, support or not, and we don't know at that point what the cost is going to be. That became an issue with the Jesse Allen project right next door here, when the costs first came back on that, and we were, you know, we're kind of shocked with how much money was being asked. And I think that's something that we have to be thoughtful of and careful of and keep reminding ourselves and developers and others, as they're coming forward with those conceptual ideas, that we may be very supportive of those, but that doesn't mean that we can open our pocketbooks to the extent that they may need. And so I think that's something that we and staff need to keep, like I say, reminding ourselves and the developers as we're going through some of those conceptual stages with projects. Secondly, to the comment that you made, Kingsley, about really liking the garage underneath, okay? I happened to be talking with Jeff about this, I think, earlier today, and underground parking runs around $49,000 per space, okay? We can build spots in our ramps for about 25 ballpark, okay? Guess who's paying the difference? Iowa City taxpayers in that gap. That comes back to how we do parking downtown. I think we really have to look at what our parking requirements are downtown and in Riverfront Crossings, because by continuing the parking requirements the way we are, and in many of these cases, ending up using TIF, we are costing Iowa City taxpayers a whole lot of money by requiring those spaces on-site. I'm not saying how we should do it, but I'm just saying I think it's part of a much bigger conversation that we have to have going forward, because the current way we're doing it is not the most financially efficient way to do it.
Well, I certainly, I had spoken with Jeff about it as well, and actually floated the idea, we're late in the process, as to reconsidering it, and I think it was too late. It is an important issue, it's tied to the question of occupancy in my mind, who are we trying to attract to live in the downtown? I think long-term residents arguably do need access to their own automobile, but I think it's another conversation at this point.
Right, yeah, for another time, yeah, I agree.
It is a significant cost, $2.5 million, you know?
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes?
Batshway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dickens, seconded by Batshway, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll take a short break here. Item number nine, prohibit tobacco use in parks. This is an ordinance amending Title VI entitled Public Health and Safety, Chapter 10 entitled Smoke-Free Places, and Title 10 entitled Public Ways and Property, to prohibit the use of tobacco, including smokeless tobacco, in all city parks.
Move first consideration.
This is first consideration.
Sorry, Jim.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Batshway, discussion, good evening.
Good evening. My pleasure to be here.
See you, Clay.
I am Clay Claussen, I'm the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and I am here to express our strong support for the ban as presented and would like to encourage the council to support it also. And in the event that there's any consideration of creating designated smoking areas in the parks, I'd like to, some of you are old enough to remember when there were smoking and non-smoking areas in commercial flights, and you remember how well that worked. And I think the same sort of concept would happen in a park area. This is a public health issue, we're not here to infringe on anyone's rights, but I'd like to look at it as a health issue. And if you have any questions of me...
Thanks, Clay.
Thank you.
Any questions for him? No. Thank you.
Thanks.
And thanks to the commission for its hard work. Anyone else? All right, well, discussion, council discussion? We had a work session discussion about this, I don't know, several weeks ago. I indicated I could not support it. I don't think it's a public health issue. I look at a list in, that's contained in our packet, a list of parks in which smoking is already prohibited, and it's a pretty extensive list. It was contained in Julie's memo to us. Maybe there's good reason to extend it to other parts of parks, et cetera, but I don't believe it's a public health issue. If one's in, I don't know, Hickory Hill Park, it's not like being, it's not like being in an airplane. I mean, in an airplane, the smoke's contained, in a place like Hickory Hill Park, it's not. So that's just my view. I know we had a discussion about this in the work session, I don't want to push it real hard. I'm gonna vote no on this, and everybody else can do what they feel is appropriate.
I'm gonna support it. I think it is, I think it is important, I think it is a health issue. And it's funny, because where I tend to be and the people I tend to be around, you know, I hardly ever run into anybody anymore that smokes. And I grew up with a father who smoked two or three packs a day, so I mean, I was around that all the time. On Sunday, I was out at the Johnson County Fairgrounds for cyclocross, and I trekked up to the top of the hill, to Mount Cruppin, to watch, you know, the riders and stuff, and end up, unbeknownst to me initially, standing next to this guy who's smoking. I mean, I ended up moving away and going somewhere else to watch, because it was, at this point in my life, I can't stand the smell of cigarette smoke. So I do see it, I think it impinges on other people's, you know, health and rights to use those spaces in a comfortable and convenient way, and so I will support it.
I also, Susan, I had a similar experience on the Johnson County Fairgrounds a few years back, because my grandson was only about five years old, and we were at the fair, and we were waiting in line for one of the amusement park rides, and a lady walked up behind us and lit up a cigarette right there, and here's my five-year-old grandson there, and he said something like, "Grandma, that lady's smoking a cigarette," and she overheard him, and oh, then she realized, you know, that she probably shouldn't be doing that. But it's like, people don't realize that, or you don't know if you're in the park, if you're coming upon children, or someone with asthma, or those kinds of conditions that it could affect. So I'm very much in favor of it.
I'm supportive as well, you know, just thinking about kind of the imagery of the plane, I'm not old enough to know about the smoking plane, so I think it's, I think it's interesting that that happened. But the, just thinking of like a park, like a manual or a picture of a park, and just seeing somebody like light up a cigarette, it just didn't, it just doesn't make sense to me in my mind. And I mean, you know, being a family that has a significant amount of smokers, I do think it's a, it's a public health issue in the sense of, you know, wanting to promote a healthier lifestyle. I get the part where the infringing on rights bothers me, I mean, I did consider that and thinking about that, and kind of the open space, that's a part of that. But I also think about, as a city, as we do certain things, how that is supposed to be promoting a particular lifestyle that we want our city to be about. And so that, for me, is the biggest reason why I'm supporting this particular motion for banning, so, yeah.
I just think it's already in a good share of our parks, and it just should be for all the parks, so that it's very easy to handle and enforce, that every park will be the same.
I think consistency, that's a good point, Terry, and I would just say, from my standpoint, it's a statement by the city that we promote healthy citizens in a healthy city. And ultimately, I view it as a cultural issue. I mean, I think the culture needs to shift in that direction, but I think, for the time being, it's a statement by the city, supporting healthy citizens.
And the evidence on second-hand smoke is just overwhelming in terms of the impacts on people. Now, there is an issue about if it's dispersed, what will the actual impact be, but why even have any small amount of risk in our parks? So I'm gonna support it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
No.
Batshway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dickens, seconded by Batshway, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Clay.
My pleasure, thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Item 10, Under 21 Amendment for Shout. Ordinance amending Title IV Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter 5 Prohibitions and Restrictions, Section 8 Persons Under the Legal Age in Licensed or Permitted Establishments. Subsection C referencing the city's Under 21 law, adding an exception for those working with a law enforcement agency. This is second consideration, but the staff requests expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Did John say something?
No.
Pauline seconded.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Taylor, discussion? Roll call.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Move final...
Motion carries seven to zero.
Move final adoption at this time.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Dickens, discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Batshway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Item 12, Rent Abatement in Emergencies. This is an ordinance amending Title 17 entitled Building and Housing, Chapter 5 entitled Housing Code, to provide for the abatement of rent in emergencies. Could I have a motion for second consideration?
Move second consideration.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Dickens, discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshway?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 13, Occupant Transition Plan. This is an ordinance amending Title 18 Site Plan Review, to require notification to occupants and an occupant transition plan for any additions or alterations to a residential development with more than 12 residential units. Could I have a motion for second consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Dickens, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 11, Unattended Vehicle Ordinance Amendment. This is an ordinance amending Title IX Motor Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 3 Rules of the Road, Section 9 General Driving Restrictions, Subsection C referencing unattended vehicles to allow safely parked vehicles with the motor running to be left unattended, matching state code. This is second consideration, but the staff requests expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Taylor, discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Item 12, Rent Abatement in Emergencies. This is an ordinance amending Title 17 entitled Building and Housing, Chapter 5 entitled Housing Code, to provide for the abatement of rent in emergencies. Could I have a motion for second consideration?
Move second consideration.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Dickens, discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item thirteen, Occupant Transition Plan. This is an ordinance amending Title Eighteen, Site Plan Review, to require notification to occupants and an occupant transition plan for any additions or alterations to a residential development with more than twelve residential units. Could I have a motion for second consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Dickens. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Dickens?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item fourteen, Parks Master Plan. This is a resolution approving the 2017 Iowa City Parks Master Plan.
Moved to resolution.
Second.
Moved by Dickens, seconded by MEMS. Discussion? Good evening, Julie.
Good evening.
Good morning.
Yeah, it feels like it already. Julie Seidel-Johnson, Parks and Rec Director. This is the final version of the Park Master Plan. It's available on the website. You had the full presentation back in August. It's been available for public review since that time. Have received very few comments, other than we just really like it, and it will be the basis for what you see coming up in our budget process, as it is our planning tool for the next, you know, five, 10, 15 years.
Excellent. Congratulations on getting it this far, and we'll see what happens right now. Would anybody else like to address it? Nancy. So, thank you, Julie.
I'm Nancy Carlson, a resident of Iowa City, and I would like to express my enthusiasm for this project. I believe it started just about a year ago. I went to a meeting in the fall. It was either in September or October. I've gone to various meetings since then, and I've watched the progress of this. I've watched the enthusiasm of the Parks Department and the company that created this plan, the people who went to the meetings. It has been an incredible experience. I'm also here to convey the fact that I have incredible fear that once more, my hope that what this plan has put forth will not come to fruition. I've lived in my house for thirty-seven years. I have come before numerous city councils talking about parks and the lack of parks in my area. I have watched the city council pass numerous plans, only to not see the difficult parts ever dealt with. And so, I looked at this, I looked at this plan again today. I mean, the incredible amount of detail in this plan is, it makes my heart sing, and therefore, it makes my fear even deeper. This is not the end. This is the beginning. And what happens after this depends upon you and your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Council discussion?
Well, I think we saw a great plan. I think we all know it's a great plan. It's an expensive plan, and we're going to have to work hard to, as we work through budgeting this year and councils for years to come, to find ways to prioritize our spending. But this is, this is really important for quality of life across our city, and I think one of the things that they really worked hard on, and John, you've talked a lot about, is just equity across the city in our parks, and everybody having parks with various amenities, et cetera. And this is, it's a great plan. I think if any of us could snap our fingers and, you know, implement it tomorrow, we would do that. But with so many things, it's going to be a challenge because of the financial resources that are going to be required. So, we're going to have to be very thoughtful and very strategic about how we can start implementing this. It, you know, goes along with the bicycle plan, two very good plans, very expensive plans, and we just don't have all the resources to do them at once. So, it'll be years in the making, but I hope that we will see significant process, progress made every year.
I would just say that, you know, I first arrived in Iowa City, it'll be eight years in November, and two of the issues that immediately came to my attention and concern were the condition of the schools and the parks. And I remember talking to Tom Marcus about it, and so I feel, you know, we're sort of at an interesting point. I feel we're, at long last, and this is not, this movement didn't begin yesterday. It's been underway, I think, for several years now. I think we are now seeing the parks and the schools turn around, and I think that's very exciting. It suggests a reinvestment in Iowa City in its entirety, because most of Iowa City consists of its residential neighborhoods. So, to reinvest in the neighborhoods, in the parks, in the schools, you know, I share Nancy's concern. I had concerns about our school district, you know, delivering on the bond, and, you know, the bond wasn't perfect, but it's moving us forward significantly, and I do believe what I've seen in the last few years, in a similar way as with the school bond, has given me more confidence that we, as a city, the city manager's office and the council understand the value of parks, and will move forward toward the implementation.
Any further discussion? I'll make one comment. Nancy, we'll get a draft budget from the staff in mid-December. Please take a look at it when it comes out, and let us know what you think. Okay. Roll call, please.
MEMS?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item fifteen, what patience you folks have shown. That's pretty amazing. Idlewild Drainage Diversion. Resolution approving, authorizing, and directing the mayor to execute and the city clerk to attest, an agreement by and between the City of Iowa City and HR Green Incorporated to provide engineering consultant services for the Idlewild Drainage Diversion Project.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Botchway. Discussion? Could Ron speak first?
Oh, you're going to go first? Mr. Mayor, Council. Ron Kentucky Public Works Director. This will authorize the mayor to sign and city clerk to attest the consultant agreement with Howard R. Green or HR Green Consultants for the Idlewild Diversion Project. With this project, we've already have done a preliminary assessment of what alternatives would be there. This will take both of the alternatives, which is both an open ditch and a closed pipe system to the Iowa River, take both of those alternatives to a preliminary state to make a determination of what is the final alternate that we would go with, and then take that to final design. Along with this, there will be the design for a pump station in the Idlewild Detention Basin. They have done a BERM project to protect themselves to the hundred-year event. The pump station would be designed to allow for HESCO barriers to be installed on top of that BERM, and then pump up to a 2008 event. So, we will go through the design of that pump station. It would be included as an alternate to the construction plans, and we would bid that as the final piece. Idlewild has committed up to $100,000 for the pump project, and the developers of the Forest View project have also committed up to 25% of that project.
Any questions for Ron?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, indeed.
Good evening. My name's Kurt Kimerling. I'm the president of the Idlewild Homeowners Association. I'm here to express the support for the project for nearly 200 owners that live in Idlewild. About a year ago, we hosted many of you at Idlewild to look at the diversion problem, the stormwater problem, and I think at that time, you were all supportive of the project. Since then, there's been a very large project proposed within our watershed, the Forest View Development, and in earlier meetings, we've been supportive of that project. But the project in Forest View does bring a lot of hardscape and rooftops into the equation, and the concern for flash flooding in Idlewild is still there. So, the diversion project will help with that. In addition to the flash flooding mitigation, the proposal of doing a pump station is very helpful to us. That's a very expensive part of the problem that we're dealing with, and we're very appreciative of adding that to the project. Lastly, I wanted to emphasize that we have brought up numerous times the need for some Idlewild Stormwater District that would manage all these future retention areas that are up in Forest View. Right now, they appear to us as an unintegrated sort of system, where various HOAs and businesses will manage their own retention areas, and those, it concerns us quite a bit if those aren't managed in the right way, that all that water is heading in our direction. So, again, we hope you support the project. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Kurt.
I'm Ivan Hall, and I'm a resident of Idlewild. Just want to make a few points. The benefit of the pump station and diversion design will benefit the people of the peninsula as well as ourselves. In the meantime, while the new road with the new development is going to be built to have a second entrance access to the peninsula, to Dubuque, it'll mitigate that such that the one road that we share today will be available with greater, less risk than before. The other thing, during the development of the new project, there's going to be a period where there's technologies not engaged, and they're doing the clearing of the twelve or so footprints, and the pump station, I believe, will play a vital role in helping to get through that period of vulnerability for the site and Idlewild itself. The pump station proposal was recommended by the joint partnership between developer and ourselves, stepping forward to support the bigger project, which will benefit the entire peninsula. And I do believe that it's a major investment of infrastructure towards what we're trying to build, entire peninsula, to manage the stormwater, given the topographic laydown of the peninsula and the new site. It's going to be quite a challenge, and we can't trust technology to answer all the questions. And what we can see by today's weather, we're in for extremes. I mean, when is the thousand-year flood going to hit us? This is the summer drought, I guess. But thank you very much for your time, and hopefully, by the end of this contract period, we'll understand the cost to complete the pump station, the diversion approach, and further building it, so we can realize the developers share 25%, the $100,000 from Idlewild, and then the balance of the money that's on the books, because you had budgeted $450,000, and you're applying the initial 192. We think working together, we can make this happen, again, solving Idlewild's concern, but allowing the bigger development to happen, which benefits the whole city.
Thank you, Ivan. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, council discussion?
Well, I think approval of this shows that we have taken the residents of Idlewild's concerns very seriously. I also see that it will play a very important part in the progression of the Forest View Development, which is important, but I think that your concerns with the stormwater were very important, and this will help.
I guess I just want to comment. I want to commend you all. I want to once again commend the developer, and of course, our staff. So often, people come and ask for solutions at that podium. Well, it's very difficult to accomplish that, and I think this is a classic example of very productive and solutions-oriented collaboration. It's really the way that it should work, but we need to see it even more frequently. So, I really want to thank you for coming together to offer your own solutions on that, especially given what you face with climate change. It's not an abstraction for you, it's an everyday reality.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad to see this moving forward, and I noticed in the, in the contract, there will be coordination with Idlewild residents and other stakeholders. So, I think the conversations will continue through the process, and the NTP is any day now, I guess, and final bids will be submitted in February of next year. So, look forward to, you know, productive outcome.
Long overdue.
I'm very aware that you folks have had, and your neighbors have had to deal with a very challenging situation over the past few years, and I fully understand why. So, I'm really pleased to be able to move ahead with this.
Mayor, can I make one comment?
Sure.
I just want to respond for those in the audience. We have received your correspondence regarding the Stormwater Management District. It's a concept that we don't have in play here, and we need to do some research as to whether, A, we can legally establish that. So, we're not ignoring it. We are looking at it. We do realize that when the rezoning for Forest View comes, that that issue needs to be addressed. Your concerns are legitimate, and if you'd just be patient, we'll respond in a comprehensive fashion and have that discussion.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item sixteen, Assessment Schedule. This is a resolution adopting an assessment schedule of unpaid mowing, cleanup of property, snow removal, sidewalk repair, and stop box repair charges, and directing the clerk to certify the same to the Johnson County Treasurer for collection in the same manner as property taxes.
So moved.
Second. Third.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Botchway. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item seventeen, Council Appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have two vacancies to fill unexpired terms on the Airport Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term on the Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy for Jefferson Street Representative to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission, and one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Telecommunications Commission. We've received no applications for these positions, so we need to re-advertise, and the deadline for applications will be October the 10th. Item eighteen, Announcement of Vacancies. Again, applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. These are new announcements. We have one vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Board of Adjustment, two vacancies to fill five-year terms on the Board of Appeals, three vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Human Rights Commission, two vacancies to fill four-year terms on the Parks and Recreation Commission, two vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Public Art Advisory Committee, and two vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Senior Center Commission. Applications for these positions must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, November the 14th, 2017. Item nineteen, Community Comment. Ben?
Good evening. I really just want to start off by inviting myself to go see solar panels with Kingsley and Susan.
You can see them from the Hilton.
I can't afford the Hilton.
Just hop a drone.
There's going to be a restaurant on top.
Ooh, okay. The other, the other little thing I want to get to before we get into the bigger things is that my title and Gustav's title has changed according to the UISG bylaws. We are no longer the City Council Liaison and the Vice City Council Liaison, given that our roles have kind of expanded, and, you know, we serve as ex officios on the Iowa City Downtown District Board of Directors, and we get involved in all sorts of other community projects. Our names have since been changed to City Liaison and Deputy City Liaison, which kind of reflects that we have a wider purview. And so, now, more substantial. Earlier, you might have seen me sneak out of the work session a little bit early. That's not because I was sick and tired of it. I was actually fascinated by that conversation earlier, and I hope that we can have more constructive conversations going forward. But it was because I had to go to the joint session at the old Capitol Mall, or at the old Capitol Building, and the joint session is when the University of Iowa Student Government, Staff Council, the Graduate and Professional Student Government, and the Board, members of the Board of Regents, President Bruce Harold, we all get in the same room. We pass legislation. It's a very symbolic event. It really only happens once, once a year. So, it's really an opportunity for us to kind of come together as like, all the different bodies that make decisions for the university and kind of communicate, speak. We pass legislation. We pass legislation related to civic engagement. We pass legislation related to affordable housing, which will be sent to you all, and we also pass legislation related to Title Nine, which is at risk. If you've seen in the news, Betsy DeVos is considering all the different policies related to that. The next thing I want to address is that we will, the University of Iowa Student Government will be hosting Senator Joni Ernst at the IMU this Friday at 12:30. All community members, all students are welcome to come and express themselves in any way that they see, they see fit. And then, I would also like to say that if you go to the farmer's market this Saturday, you might see an uptick in students. There is a $3 voucher, if you show your student ID, that you can spend on some fresh produce or whatever you want, and so, it's kind of a, an initiative to get, again, get students more involved in the community, because that's always something we like to see happen. And then, the last thing that I'd like to speak on is kind of, at my last announcement, I was speaking of DACA and kind of how that, that policy has been at risk. Since I, since that day, President Simpson has released his own statement related to DACA. The Association of Big Ten Students has released a statement, a joint statement, related to DACA. President Bruce Harold has released his own statement related to DACA. So, I would kind of, again, just publicly echo on behalf of UISG that we do stand in solidarity with any student that runs the risk of, we stand with any student that might be affected by the removal of the DACA program, and that I would like to reiterate that they are welcome here. This is their home, and like, we will do everything that we can to protect them. Other than that, we have Penn State this weekend, and so, go Hawks.
Thank you, Ben. Okay. Item twenty, City Council Information. Let's start with Terry and move left.
I attended the ribbon cutting at Miller-Franck Holz Park, which is a study in perseverance on my part. I finally got the park done, and as we talked about with the master plan, that this is one park that had been neglected for a long time. It was just a big empty lot, and I was very glad to see Julie was there. The Parks Commission came after their meeting. They all drove out as a group. Our city manager made it after soccer practice, but it was a great event for that area, and that park is being used constantly. There was a historic building meeting at the Engler, and it was very well attended. There was some very good conversations there. I know there were several other council members there as well, but it was, I think it was a very good meeting. Oktoberfest is coming up, September 30th. I'm sure Kingsley will be there. I have to work that day, so you're going to have to take my share of the beer.
I got you. Pay for my ticket, though.
So, all those things that Terry said, there's a trauma-informed care conference at the Radisson Hotel in Corvill on September 25th and 26th. It's a collaboration.
So all those things that Terry said, there's a trauma-informed care conference at the Radisson Hotel in Corvale on September 25th and 26th. It's a collaboration between a lot of different entities. I've actually never gone to the meeting, but I've been on the email a lot, so if you can get out there, I think it's important, especially the second day on the 26th. I will be there for that, where it's gonna be talking about how we can come together as a community and develop some programming around trauma-informed care, so I'm excited about that. I have a separate issue to kind of bring up, and I'll try to be brief, because my iPad's dead, and so I don't have it right in front of me, but is there any, I've been talking to some folks out at the Manville Heights neighborhood in regards to our work session agenda item that's coming up in November, one of the 21st. One of the things that they requested was that could we kick that a little bit further down the road to December?
Really?
Yeah, and the reason for that being is that the November 21st, and maybe we can, maybe we can reach out again, that's what they said this morning, actually, was, because November 21st is like right there in Thanksgiving. And so just attention to it and some of the other things would just be problematic, and so I'm just kind of putting that out there, and I'll reach back out to just reconfirm, because it was only a couple people there. There were some people that weren't able to be there, but I think that that was one of the major concerns is right next to Thanksgiving.
I think it matters how fully the neighbors are behind that. I mean, not, it doesn't have to be a vote or anything from the neighbors. I had promised them that we would address this topic before the start of December, so November the 21st. I don't have any objection to pushing it back a meeting, but I want to make sure that...
That it's more than just a couple people.
People are on board. Yeah, I agree. I agree. But I just wanted to see if council's okay with possibly doing that. Okay. I'll follow back up.
Susan?
Yeah, a couple things. Want to thank staff, you know, from the city manager's office on down for the employee tailgate luncheon a week ago, Friday. I think everybody that was out there had a great time, good food, and just heard a lot of staff members, you know, really express their appreciation.
Don't say anything about me being stung on the tongue by a bee.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know anything about that.
Oh, it was no fun at all.
Did you take pictures?
Well, other than Jim's experience, I guess. It was a really good time. Great food, just nice to always sit down with staff and, you know, visit, and so that show our appreciation to them, so that was nice. Terry already mentioned the historic presentation at the Engler. I think there were about four of us there, but we didn't talk, Eleanor, so I think we were okay. I know it's been a week, but I just want to publicly express my appreciation to the people in the Iowa City Community School District who voted in favor of the bond last Tuesday. I think this is a huge issue, not only for the city of Iowa City, but for North Liberty and Corvale, people in the county whose children attend there. It's huge for us in terms of neighborhood stabilization. It's huge in terms of economic development. People who are thinking about moving here to work, thinking about expanding or bringing businesses here, one of the absolutely most important things they look at is the school district as they investigate various geographical areas. And so I just really, I, you know, you mentioned earlier, John, you know, the plan may not be perfect. I don't think any plan that big can ever be perfect, but literally, you know, dozens, if not hundreds, of people spent thousands, if not tens of thousands, of hours developing that facility's master plan, and as they kept saying, you know, to this point, it was on time, under budget, and we just have to, you know, as community members, stay vigilant and watch the progress and make sure that what was promised is delivered, and I think it's just incredibly important. So I just really want to take the time to say thank you to all the community members who supported that. If you have not seen the advertisement, you actually can go out and buy this, but I don't tend to do it that way. PBS is showing, I think it's a 10-part series, The Vietnam War, started on Sunday night. It was really good.
It's amazing.
And somebody posted on Facebook, and I had to respond to it, like in the first three minutes, I learned something that was like, why in the world did we ever get involved in this? But it was, it was called "lack of sharing of information." It was, it was a piece of information by a member of the United States OSS, which was the precursor to the CIA, which wrote a very, he'd spent a lot of time over there, wrote a detailed memo saying, "This is unwinnable. Stay out of here." This is, it got buried in a CIA file or an OSS file, never came to light for the President Eisenhower, et cetera, beyond that. But it's a really, really good series, and as I say, I think it's 10-part. If you want to go out and buy it, it's on DVD, Blu-ray.
Let's go over to your house and watch it.
But I'm watching it or taping it, you know, on the DVD for the next 10 weeks or whatever, but it's Sunday nights at 7:00. I think it's every Sunday for the next few weeks.
Just amazing visual things.
No, it's Sunday, Sunday through Thursday. Oh, well, I missed it then, so... This week and Sunday through Thursday next. Next week. Oh, man, I'm already behind. I'm gonna have to go, now I'm gonna have to go buy this. They're streaming it, too. They're streaming it, too? Okay, well, I'll have to go. It's on PBS. I'm gonna have to go find the streaming, because I'm already behind. And then just a reminder, we have an MPO meeting tomorrow at 4:30 in this room. So hope that Jim's not assigned to that. The other six of us are. Hope everybody's here. If not, make sure you get a substitute. Thank you.
Just to follow up on Susan's mentioning of the bond, just an image to share or experience to share. You know, when the news, when we got the news the night of the vote, Jackie Briggs in our neighborhood started driving around honking her horn. So, you know, it was as if we won the World Series or something, you know, I don't know. But that's kind of the mood up on the north side that, again, I haven't been in Iowa City that long, eight years, but, you know, some folks who have lived in the north side have been struggling with the issue of horse man for over 30 years. So this was, this was a huge night for, for the north side as well as neighborhoods throughout Iowa City.
We would have lost that building without this bond, I believe.
It's very possible.
I'd like to thank anybody and congratulate anybody, Jeff and anyone involved with the cyclocrosses this past weekend. I think it was, again, another successful event. I only attend on Sunday. I know I saw Simon and Susan and Kingsley, but met lots of folks from all across the country and Iowa, and a lot of Chicago folks. There must be a lot of bicycle enthusiasts from Chicago, but it was fun to talk to them, and just, I just got pumped up just feeling the enthusiasm and the energy from the crowd and as well as the participants to watch those folks, and especially climbing the Mount Crumpet Hill. It's like, oh, my goodness, that's just amazing how they can do that, so, and hoping for being selected again next year. It'd be wonderful.
Did it make you want to bike up that hill?
Yes, it did. But I walked instead, but it was tough even walking it.
It's pretty steep. All right, I'll just mention a few things.
Wait, King, Rockney.
You need me to go left?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For once, I'm going right.
Terry doesn't go left.
The biggest thing is that you just thought of Kingsley.
Yeah, well, hey.
Well, you're George Washington.
It must be 9:15. I'll make it quick for once, in the way that I can. I just wanted to congratulate all of the school board people that won, as well as the people that didn't. I think school board, Susan has served on school board.
It's harder.
I, oh my goodness, I have so much respect for every single one of the people that serve, that try to run, and that participate. There is more passion on that in the school district. It's an incredible amount of stress that they have to endure. It's a credible opportunity, and I'm just, I really commend everyone that's taken the time to make that work, because it's very difficult. And I also encourage the community, let's be positive. They have a mandate. Let's work with them. If they have concerns, you can share that with them. I really got to know Ruthine and Janet at the farmer's market, a lot of good conversations. So I'm sure that they and Sean and JP, of course, are gonna be out in the community, so let's address those concerns in a positive way before, you know, we get some mad at them sometimes. So, once again, congratulations, and with man, I tell you what, I walk in, I don't live in the north side, but I walk in the north side all the time. I just cannot wait to see what that looks like once it's actually built. And of course, we'll get to see that with Longfellow in September of 2018, so kudos all around.
That was pretty short, wasn't it?
That was pretty good.
For me, anyway.
Yeah, for you. I'll mention just a few things. First, it was a real pleasure to attend Doug Boothroy's retirement celebration here on the 11th. A well-deserved, I don't know, ceremony for Doug.
I saw him walking the streets right before this meeting. He was headed the other way.
He told me he has plans. Also want to mention that our Economic Development Committee met on September the 15th and will meet again on October the 10th.
No, we won't.
No?
I have to be out of town, so we're gonna have to change.
Well, like I said, we're not gonna meet on...
Sometime in the future.
I and at least one other council person, I'm not sure who, are gonna be meeting with representatives of the neighborhood council on the 28th. John, okay, thanks. And I can't pass up the opportunity to congratulate the victors of the September 12th school board election, even though it's been said by, I don't know, four or five other people. I eagerly look forward to working with JP Cosson, Ruthina Malone, Janet Godwin, Sean Istone, and the other three continuing board members over the next few years. I also want to congratulate the very large number of people who voted on the school board referendum. It was a very large turnout, and that couples with a very decisive 65-35 vote to provide much-needed clarity for the coming years. That's a huge thing. So bravo to everybody who voted, huge turnout, et cetera. Jeff? Simon? Eleanor? Kelly?
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion, could, let's see, discussion, hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.